Good birthday?
Yeah.
Okay, Stormy is not coming. I work here.
Nothing in the mail.
No, it's still now. I mean, that's the... You gotta sit him with a hand and rest.
Nine years. I've got my... Next to be with other questions. So I'll tell them. We don't care where they are. Yeah, hopefully. I mean, like, it'd be better if y'all get a quorum, because if y'all don't get a quorum, we still have to re-lead. Yeah, then we have to do something before that meeting or something. Um, so it was... Uh, now, quickly, they're letting people know, I guess, so... I'm so mad at them. So if you can...
Play the whole game. Don't throw a flag. The last two minutes. We have to make it flat. We have to make it flat.
Friday and stuff like that, so, uh, the intention is...
Because then it very likely won't walk down.
Yeah, but that... No, that's how we thought. It was good. But they did not call. Should've been soon. Michelle, do we think, um, Epperson's kind of...
They didn't.
Epperson?
Mario's.
He what? Interesting. Mario's on the way. He'll be here. Just need to know about Jackson.
He's still named Epperson.
Where's not Paul?
He's here.
What's his name, Paul? Is he here?
He's here.
Oh, I didn't see. Oh, he's here. Okay.
That project.
Oh. Soon for it.
Twenty seventy and sixty-nine hundred bucks. I, I tried to get that done years ago, but nothing over some amount of money, but above a certain amount.
But see, remember? How much money he could sweep without there.
Right.
They never gave him.
No, and it's not illegal. It's wrong. It's on it. I don't like it, but it's not. He didn't break down. He could spend fifty million dollars without counsel for it. Well, that's the problem.
Yeah, America, I'm talking like they're married. The citizens of Three Point need to break up.
This is ridiculous.
Oh, see, I thought I was saying something dangerous. You come every Friday. We always on the same side. I don't know who's bad actually. The window. The, uh, patio.
Yeah.
I can see more company. And it's three seconds.
Well, I said it should be here in about three minutes.
All right, Ms. Bryant, we're gonna get started. All right, it is three thirty-five.
It's three thirty-five on February fourteenth. I'd like to call this Cattle Parish Commission Work Session to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Gage White, Commissioner Talia Farah.
Here, sir.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here, sir.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Here.
All right, you have, uh, seven of twelve members present. That is a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Commissioner Chavez, would you be kindness to lead us in the invocation? Sorry to catch you off guard. And Commissioner Talia Farah, would you be kindness to lead us in the pledge?
Will do.
Everybody stand, please. All right, everyone bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for today. Thank you for all the blessings that you, you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this amazing weather that's outside, and thank you that we can assemble in this chamber together safely and to do your will. Please let us listen to your will and operate the best we can for the citizens of Cattle Parish. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
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 All face the flag. Military veterans may render a hand of brown salute. All others place your hand over your heart, and let us pay our tribute to the greatest country God has ever created by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Thank you, Commissioner Talia Farah. Mr. Clerk, do we have any agenda additions?
I am not aware of any agenda additions today. Would you like to move along to the next section?
Yes, sir.
All right, that brings us to Citizens' Comments, where citizens are asked to fill out a comment card, and, uh, comments are limited to three minutes. I believe I had submitted and received one comment card, and you should have it now.
Okay, I have one card here. If anyone else would like to comment, it's, it's a fairly light group out there, but if anyone else would like to comment, please fill out a card and pass it to the clerk. In the meantime, Mr. Ken Creft, if you'll please come up and, and let us know what's on your mind today. Welcome, Mr. Creft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I'm keeping the same one I've had forty-eight half-years.
Good policy.
Ken Creft, one fifty-seven Archer, Streetport, seven eleven zero five. I like to come and, when I have several things, and try to get them all in three minutes instead of making one trip for every item. Of course, a year ago, we had a lot of ice and snow, and it's so much nicer today. And, uh, a reminder, kind of, for Todd's district, uh, and also whoever's got the district at the intersection of I twenty and the state line. But as I've mentioned before, going back to twenty-fourteen, I think, so eight years later, I do it about once a year around my birthday, which is Tuesday a week on two, 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 two. Let's get "Welcome to Cattle Parish" on I twenty eastbound, coming from Texas. Westbound, leaving Bossier, we're welcomed. Let's get a sign, small and expensive, "Welcome to Cattle." Southbound on I forty-nine, there is none. Welcome to Louisiana, Bienvenue in Louisiana. Northbound on I forty-nine, leaving De Soto, there's a "Welcome to Cattle" sign, but why... And US eighty has one eastbound into Cattle, and US seventy-one has one southbound into Cattle. But let's get an I forty-nine south and an I twenty east welcoming people to Cattle Parish. They know they're in the great state, but they don't know if, what parish they're in when they're not familiar. And the Charter Review Committee, which met not this year, not last year, but year before last, made two recommendations. And Ms. Bryant mentioned that the juvenile justice meeting on Groundhog Day, they've recently failed. Well, I checked the record, and the twenty-sixteen Review Committee made four recommendations, voted on in December of sixteen, the same year, not two years later. And if we wait to twenty-three on the two charter amendments, Fleet Services being one, and it almost passed last time, three of four passed last time. Check the record. Check, go, go stick to the state. Three out of four is majority, and, and almost all four. We're gonna renew, according to Stephanie, some millages that expire at the end of next year. We're gonna try this fall, so we're already on the ballot. We're already paying poll commissioners and sheriff's deputies. Let's put the two charter renewal items on the same ballot. They're more likely to pass with tax renewals this year and the fall than they are next year with a new juvenile justice, try number five or try number six. I think, I think it's fail five, so I think it'll be number six. Finally, uh, and we meet after tomorrow at the Spring Street with Judge Hollowell and Casey Jones. And finally, I invite people tomorrow night to Broadmoor Neighborhood Meeting at six-thirty PM at Broadmoor Presbyterian Church. Jim, and the guest speaker is New Streetport Chief of Police Wayne Smith. And the anagram for that is this way. Men?
Thank you, Mr. Creft. Mr. Clerk, do we get any other cards?
We did not, and, uh, so if you'd like to move forward, uh, the next section on our agenda is Visitors. We do not have any scheduled visitors today. Uh, so that brings us to Commission Remarks, where, uh, we have the Administrator Report attached.
Okay, um, let's see. Do anyone on the board need to get on the board? Any communiques? Okay, I see Parliamentarian Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, because we're so close to a comment about the signs, I wonder if our administration could give us an update, uh, that the public could hear about the interstate signs that Mr. Creft was just talking about.
Mr. Creft? You might want to, you might want to listen up to Commissioner Young's question to Ms. Bryant regarding the signs on the interstate.
If you could just let us know, um... If you could just let us know, uh, where they'll be and how much they cost.
Yes, I'll let, uh, Kevin Lawrence come up and give you all an update on the signs.
Thank you.
Kind of like college. What's your sign?
My signs always go Tigers. All right, good news. Um, the contract for the signs, uh, should have a PO issued this week. We, we got three. These are for the signs on the north of forty-nine and south of forty-nine. Um, the contract should, I'll check Ms. Valerie, but it should have a PO issued by the middle of this week. Uh, the contractor has been given his notice to proceed. He's now waiting on materials. Now, we, just like all the other jobs we've been doing, we are at the mercy of the market. So I cannot give you a solid start date when it'll actually break ground, but as soon as he gets his materials, he will. And when I get that start date, I can pass it along to, uh, Mrs. Bryant, and then she to y'all.
Thank you.
But we are moving on that.
Somebody give me, has a one, what about a sign on twelve mile by you, I forty-nine, say, just twelve mile by you.
That's a state.
That was the other one. No.
All right.
That's the only two we're doing, forty-nine north and south.
All right, Mr. Young.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, Ms. Bryant. That's all, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Epperson?
Uh, yes, I would like to ask the administration if they would do a press release with photos of the signage that we have going up on, uh, I forty-nine, as well as verbiage, because I hadn't seen anything public yet. Have you all? Okay.
We didn't have the, I don't think we had the final, but I saw we emailed the, we emailed the version to the commissions, but we'll send that again.
I'm talking about, no, I got that as a commissioner. I'm saying a press release for the public, just like Ken come down here, you know, send it to all the media outlets with a photo of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll look at that.
And also, if you would, uh, would you have someone empty the flag boxes and, uh, give them to me, and I'll take them to the American Legion, where we can properly dispose of the flag that's in there? I think, I think they're almost full. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson. Anyone else on the board before we ask for Administrator Report? Seeing no one, Ms. Bryant, do you have something for us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, the monument relocation, we have forwarded the contract to the vendor, and we're waiting to hear back from them. Expect to hear something by, um, probably tomorrow. Um, the ERAP program, we're still waiting on the Treasury. I know there are citizens that are asking every day, but we're still waiting on the funds for the Treasury. We hope to get it this week. Um, indications were we would get it last week, but we didn't. So we're hoping to get it this week. Um, juvenile detention, we have eighteen in detention, um, eleven at CCC. Um, COVID data, we had three positive cases so far in February, um, for the parish, five for agencies. That's a total of, uh, seventy-six since July for the parish. Um, just wanna let you all know on Facebook, we're continuing to have issues. I think right now it's working, but we've had issues with, uh, Facebook and security, us not being able to, uh, receive security clearance, and then if we do, we've had issues with, um, the equipment. So we think we have the security issues worked out, and we're still working to make sure, uh, on the equipment. We may have to purchase some additional equipment, but just wanted you all to know that we're working on it, and we're trying to have it, uh, a consistent, uh, streaming on Facebook, um, in the near future. And that concludes Administration Report.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Bryant. Commissioner Chavez, would you have a question?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Frazier, I have a question on that. Um, I know we saw a lot of email traffic this weekend about, uh, the detention center being full, but at eighteen, that's not capacity. So what's, what was going on? What, what happened this weekend?
Uh, Mr. Walker is here, but you know, that's a fluid number. It could be full one day and not full another. But, um, Director Walker is here.
Director Walker, if you could talk about what happened this weekend?
As Ms. Bryant said, it's a fluid number. What happens, you'll get four children arrested. Uh, the judges will, as they come in, they make that determination if they're gonna stay or not. Um, they'd come in on Monday and then have a follow-up hearing where they learn more information, and they possibly release more. Um, this particular weekend, we had three children, unfortunately, that were in on a recent murder, and they were transferred to CCC. So you can go from twenty-four down to twenty-one. So it's a, it's a mixture of that. The three children that got sent to CCC, and then when the judges come in on Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they hold hearings, and some of those kids come out. So because it's such a small number, only twenty-four, if five kids get arrested, we can go straight up to twenty-four, and then as soon as they get processed through their cases, they can, you know, we can be back down at eighteen, like we are now.
Can you, and I know you can't pull this number now, but just for the benefit of the group and all the commission, can you send us, like, a yearly snapshot of the percentage of, of occupancy or capacity that our juvenile detention sits at, just for the year?
Absolutely. It can be constantly running between roughly eighty-five percent.
Oh, okay.
We're in eighty-five percent capacity, um, throughout the year. We'd be at roughly not nineteen as our average daily population. We have been running high this year at about twenty-three. Um, the last two months have been relatively high. We get those serious cases in, and they'll be in for a little longer.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, Director.
Yes, sir.
That's all, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Epperson?
She was speaking in reference to the juvenile detention center. There's been some debate back and forth about, uh, issues at CCC, and, uh, I would urge you all to read an op-ed letter that District Attorney James Stewart sent. Very, very enlightening. Still a back and forth about whose, what, whose fault and all that. Very articulate letter, detailed to the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, seeing no one else on the board, um, Mr. Clerk looks to be occupied. I'll hold that until Thursday. Thank you.
All right, um, that brings us to Old Business. There's no Old Business, um, on the agenda scheduled for today. So we'll move forward to New Business, uh, where you have a number of items. The first being, uh, nine point one, which is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-one ninety-four of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance to accept streets in Old Town subdivision unit number one into the parish of Cattle Road System and otherwise provide with respect there to in District One.
Move to adopt.
Second. I'm sorry, we got a second. We got a motion by Commissioner Hopkins and a second by Commissioner Lazarus, I believe. Commissioner Hopkins, would you like to comment on this?
Uh, these are some streets that are in the Blanchard area that will be taken in. Uh, it's a residential development, and they've, they meet all the standards to be accepted.
And I see the, the administration is supporting accepting these roads into the, into the system. Now, Commissioner Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I wondered why, um, if they're close to Blanchard, why, why is it that the parish is taking the streets and not Blanchard?
The, the parish maintains all streets except for Vivian and Shreveport. Back in the eighties...
It maintains Blanchard already?
Yeah, and what happened, back in the eighties, a tax was passed, and each one of the municipalities asked, they would support that tax if the parish would take care of their roads.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Jimmy, do you have some comment? Nope, okay. Seeing nobody else on the board, let's vote.
All right, and that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition, uh, to authorize, uh, that for your Thursday agenda. Uh, and that brings us to nine point two, authorize introduction of ordinance number sixty-one ninety-five of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance, uh, similarly to accept the streets in the Blanchard Lake Estates Unit Number Four into the parish of Cattle Road System and otherwise provide with respect there to.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hopkins, second by Commissioner Lazarus. Same story here, Commissioner Hopkins?
Same thing.
All right. Any questions on this? Seeing none, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. Uh, that brings us to the next item, which is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-one ninety-six of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues for the American Rescue Plan Fund, uh, to provide an appropriation for the juvenile center in Cattle Parish.
Move to advance.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Young and a second by Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Young, would you like to comment?
Uh, I think this has been through the American Rescue Plan Committee thoroughly, and, um, seems like a good investment in our juvenile services and, um, our community, so I think we should pass it.
I agree with you. Would it, does anyone want to hear from, uh, Mr. Walker? Are y'all, y'all all informed on this and ready to vote? All right, seeing no concerns, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. Uh, the next item is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-one ninety-seven of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund to appropriate funds for the Cattle Park's Grab and Go Feeding Program and otherwise provide with respect there to.
Move to Englobo and adopt ordinance number sixty-one ninety-seven and sixty-one ninety-eight. Both expenditures out of the Riverboat Fund.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hopkins to Englobo and advance sixty-one ninety-seven and sixty-one ninety-eight. I believe the second was Commissioner Young. Would you like to comment, Commissioner Hopkins?
Those came from the Appropriations Committee, um, that met last week.
And I will add that in both cases, they're supporting, um, organizations or initiatives that are, that are a core part of our underlying mission and, uh, and goal of the parish activities. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. And that brings us to the next item, which is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-one ninety-nine of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund for the year twenty-twenty-two to provide an appropriation to provide ballistic vests for Shreveport and Cattle Parish Fire Districts and otherwise provide with respect there to. Similarly to some of your, uh, items that, um, are a carryover from last year's budget, this is an item that, uh, was...
Move to advance.
Was that a motion by Commissioner Young and a second by Commissioner Talia Farah?
It was.
Mr. Commissioner Talia Farah, would you like to comment on Commissioner Young's motion to advance?
Please.
No, it is, as we've, we've heard, this is just a carryover from last year. Um, I think that there was some confusion on, um, the logistics of purchasing the vest, and I spoke with, uh, Ms. Haley over there, and, uh, so this was the suggestion that she brought it back before the, the committee and, oh, excuse me, the commission, so no further comment.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else on the board, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. Uh, the next item is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-two hundred of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance to establish a temporary parish planning and zoning commission to provide for its membership, to provide for an effective date, and to otherwise provide with respect there to.
So move for advan, for introduction?
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Chavez, a second from Commissioner John Paul Young. All right, Commissioner Chavez, would you care to comment?
Uh, I would. Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, myself and, uh, Commissioner Johnson met with Tim Magnner from the Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, along with a couple of other local businessmen and development, uh, professionals within the community, and they've asked that we do something in the interim until, uh, we get something figured out with zoning. Uh, and this was a good compromise, uh, that seemed very bipartisan, just to set something up. Obviously, it has to lay over for two weeks, so the, that's the answer for the date of March the third, uh, and it would go through until June the thirtieth, where I feel, uh, by then, we'll effectively have something in place. Uh, but this will expedite the process of have the people that are sitting in the queue, developments in many districts in the parish, uh, as well as a few right there in the five-mile buffer, uh, that are requesting zoning variations, uh, or building permits, to get them through, get them built, uh, and allow us some time to figure out what we're gonna do with our zoning. Uh, I would ask for your support in advancing this, and we can then, during the next meeting, vote for the people to go on there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yeah, since, uh, since this does have a, a, a deadline, they will...
Sunset?
Sunset, or I'll, I'll support it. Uh, I think everybody knows my stance on the planning boards, even though I did bring the original one. Uh, and, and we do have a problem, uh, because I, I know of a couple different in my district where they're trying to get some things done, so I think this will at least take care of that problem. And so I'll support moving this forward. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else on the board, I will say, Commissioner Chavez, I appreciate you and Commissioner Johnson proposing this temporary, um, patch to, to our challenges, and hopefully it will get us to a better place, uh, in a few months. So thank you for putting this together. All right, seeing no one else on the board, please vote. Let's please vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support and none in opposition. Uh, that brings us to the next item, which is to authorize introduction of ordinance number sixty-two oh-one of twenty-twenty-two. That's an ordinance amending ordinance sixty-seventy-one of twenty-twenty-one to establish a parish planning and zoning commission to provide for its membership, to provide for an effective date, and otherwise provide with respect there to.
Move to advance.
We have a motion from Commissioner Epperson. Seeing no second, that fails for...
What?
He wasn't on appointment, I think, of an urban board member. And his reason was, since, uh, the pool body has to vote on all of them anyway, it's thought it'd be fair for one appointment from an urban board member.
We have a motion, and it's, and do we have a, do we have a second?
Oh, I think he's one, he wanted clarification.
Yeah, I just, um, I just put myself on the board.
I don't think...
Kane, no shit, etc.
I'll, I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second, a motion from Commissioner Epperson, a second from Commissioner Talia Farah. Commissioner Talia Farah, you're on the board?
Okay, so, um, I know that this is, uh, from Commissioner Burrell, and, um, he's not here today, so, um, I think it'd be courteous of us to, um, if we have any questions or to ensure that, you know, maybe, I don't know if he's gonna be back, you know, at a specific date, maybe by Thursday or whatever, or just, you know, to... or whatever, or just, you know, to, to delay it until he gets back and he can make a comment on his position rather than us, you know, voting on it. So I think it's just the courteous thing to do.
Someone would have to make a motion to delay.
Well, if I may get a form of information.
Go ahead Commissioner.
Advancing to Thursday would be pretty much the same thing. You can always kill it Thursday if you didn't like it. And they may be so, advancing would be the same thing.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, you're on the board?
Just, just to, this is, this is to move it for introduction.
Right.
So there would be no discussion on Thursday on it. We would have a public hearing and a vote in two weeks.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Burrell and I have talked and we sit on two different sides on this one. I don't support it. I believe this needs to be from the rural area. It probably wouldn't even hurt at this point to say they should live within the planning district. It's not on there. But I think Shreveport has their zoning, Wall City has their zoning board, Greenwood has their, but everybody's represented. It needs to be represented. Now we need to represent the rural area. And, and this will be the rural area. The planning, five mile planning area, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Epperson, that's an old, that's an old name there. Okay. All right. And seeing no one new on the board, let's vote on whether to advance or not advance this item to Thursday.
Okay. And that does not advance with two in support, five in opposition. That motion fails. And that brings us to the next item, which is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-two oh two of two thousand and twenty-two. That's an ordinance to authorize the administrator to execute any predeals, servitude, or passage or, and right to use over parish property located in southwestern quarter of section twenty-eight, township twenty-two, North Range sixteen west, and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hopkins, a second by Commissioner Young. Commissioner Hopkins, would you like to comment?
I would like to ask Mr. Whittington to come up and explain to the commission this...
Mr. Whittington?
Piece of legislation.
This is going to be a servitude over a piece of property which we refer to as the old Vivian landfill. There is a piece of property located behind our property, which is landlocked, and we have to grant them access. We, Mr. Bernstein's been in negotiations with them for many months and we finally got it all worked out. And they're going to do what, whatever we've requested of them to get to their property.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote.
Okay. And that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. And that brings us to the next item, which is authorizing the introduction of ordinance number sixty-two oh three of two thousand and twenty-two. That's an ordinance to authorize the administrator to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with Caddo Gathering LLC regarding a pipeline through and under parish property located in section seven, township eighteen north, range fifteen west, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Move to adopt.
A motion by Commissioner Hopkins.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Lazarus. Commissioner Hopkins, would you, would you please comment?
Mr. Whittington, would you come up on this one also?
This is going to be a pipeline for natural gas going across a tract of land we own up in the north part of the parish. It's a two and a half acre tract. It's actually on the south side of Blanchard Fur Road, right across from Walter V. Jacobs.
Okay. Any question, any, any other issues here? All right. Let's please vote. Thank you Mr. Whittington.
All right. That motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. And the next item is to authorize resolution number eighteen of two thousand and twenty-two. That's a resolution amending the rules and bylaws of the Caddo Parish Commission regarding the resubmission of agency, I'm sorry, of agenda items by commissioners and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Point of clarification, this is number nineteen.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I, what did I read it as?
Eighteen.
I'm sorry. It certainly is nineteen. That is authorizing resolution number nineteen of two thousand and twenty-two, which is the resolution amending the rules and bylaws of the Caddo Parish Commission regarding resubmission of agenda items by commissioners and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to make an amendment and advance the amendment. The substitute motion would be instead of thirty days, to just do one work session. And I can explain if I can get a second.
Second.
Thank you Commissioner. The reason as opposed to thirty days, so first off, just a little background on this, I think this resolution has come before us previously a year or two ago, and I think even maybe a few years back. It's, it says a cooldown period, but, but we know sometimes when we have very controversially and politically polarized issues, this chamber is filled with individuals. And regardless of what side of the political spectrum you, you sit on, I think sometimes it may be good for cooler heads to prevail. And regardless of the topic, sometimes we're for it, sometimes we're against it. I think it would behoove the, the citizens and the commissioners if there would be that cooldown period. And thirty days may be too long. I spoke with another commissioner and the reason being is it may lay that issue over for three work sessions or just too, too long for it to take place if something indeed next, needs to take place that is not politically polarized. But what I'd like to see is if it's something that's just, I guess, on the, on the different sides of the spectrum, so that we're not arguing with each other up here on cameras, but that we're rather working together to find a common solution, that I think one work session is good enough to not have it on the agenda to argue about it again. And hopefully we could find some common ground amongst ourselves for the two weeks that it lays over, as opposed to putting it back on the agenda. So this was an olive branch, so to speak, from the commission to see that if, if this could take place, I would ask for your vote. And if you disagreed, then vote it down. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yeah. If we vote something down today, then automatically if we want to put it back on the next time. So we really don't need this resolution.
It would, they wouldn't allow to put it on the next time. So we would have to wait one. So we would wait one, one agenda.
We would wait to the next work session.
Correct.
But we already do that.
No.
If it fails today in work session, then it wouldn't go any further for the Thursday.
He said you have to skip a work, I think the substitute motion is proposing skipping...
So you're still, you're saying you're going to skip...
So really probably more twenty days than thirty days because twen, thirty days may, may make it stick on two more.
And that all sounds great, but let me, let me tell you, be real careful when we start doing things like this, because there's something going to come up that's going to be awful dead gum important, that we need to get moved. We need to get things going on. And if we do this, just because we, we disagree politically on something sometimes, I understand that. Well, this, this planning board stuff is a good example of things taking a long time. And you start wa, putting things off that long, it's going to come up. We all know it's going to come back up again eventually. I don't know that we need this, but I mean, each person votes the way they think. I just, I hate for us to see, to get in a position where we really need something passed and we've said no at the last meeting and we can't bring it back on now. We've got to wait to the following meeting. And it's, it's time sensitive. And that worries me.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Hopkins. Attorney Fraser?
I just have a question because the resolution reference, references failed legislation, which contemplates that something was actually voted down and not something that would have taken place in the work session is not being advanced. So is this supposed to be something that is not advanced as well, or just something that you all have taken an up and down vote on?
It's a good, oh, may I?
Please.
It's a great question Attorney Fraser. I think, I think the horseshoe understands maybe the premise of what I'm trying to accomplish. So this being the work session, we can amend it, substitute, or whatever we feel is best, or we could just stop it and vote it here down. But ultimately, it's trying to stop the, the issue with things coming back on the agenda, week after week after week, and taking up a lot of time.
So it would actually contemplate both situations? Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or concerns? Commissioner Chavez?
And this is the work session. So I mean, I won't feel bad if you guys vote it down. Or if you want to throw it to committee, we can discuss it more. It's just a thought of, of us trying to do something so that these agenda items don't keep coming on over and over again for, for various reasons. Not, this doesn't have to do with one specific. So, thank you Chairman.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to move this to the Policy and Procedures Committee.
Second.
Well, Commissioner Chavez seconded it. So, all right. So we have a motion from Commissioner Young to move this, and a second by Commissioner Chavez to move this to Policies and Procedures. Any comment on that, Commissioner Young? Any comment on your proposal, your motion? All right. Seeing none, seeing no one on the board, let's vote on Commissioner Young's substitute motion to forward this to Policies and Procedures.
All right. That motion carries with six in support and one in opposition. And it brings us to the next item, which is to authorize resolution number twenty of two thousand and twenty-two. That's a resolution confirming participation in the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, Public Facility Improvement Project with Water Works District Number Seven, identifying partners and otherwise providing with...
Move to advance.
I guess so.
A motion by Commissioner Young, a second by Commissioner Talafaro to advance to Thursday. Commissioner Young?
I have nothing to say about this. It comes from our administration and I'm going to forward it. Thank you.
I would ask, if there's no one else on the board, I'd like to ask Ms. Haley to come in on this for us, just so we're fully informed.
So every two years, y'all pick a project to go out for a grant with LCTBG. And then it's the requirement of the grant that y'all approve a resolution for us to move forward with that project.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody ready to vote? All right. Please vote.
All right. That motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. And that brings us to the next item, authorizing a special resolution of remembrance for Bobby Kate Hicks.
Move to advance.
Second.
Commissioner Epperson?
I'd like a substitute motion to advance all of our resolutions and our appointments.
Second.
So that's to englobo and advance all, all resolutions and appointments. So that would include item nine dot thirteen, nine dot fourteen, nine dot fifteen. Does that summarize your resol, your motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Epperson, okay. Thank you very much. Any comments on that? Seeing none, please vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition. And that brings us to Communicates and Committee reports.
Anyone on the board? Commissioner Epperson, is that new? Is that old?
That's old.
Okay. Any...
I've got one Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead Commissioner.
Thank you. Southern Hills had a neighborhood cleanup scheduled for this last Saturday. However, due to the weather with icy rain, we postponed it and we'll do the same time on March the fifth. So for all the people listening, if you'd like to come out. And thank you to our sponsors, Starbucks and Little Caesars that are all feeding for free. I think it's pretty cool that they're investing in the community. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Commissioner Chavez. Any, anybody else have anything for Communicates? Going once, going twice. Okay. That is it for Communicates? Do we have any later Robin citizens comments, Mr. Cork?
We've not received any.
Move to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn and a second. So thank you all for a efficient meeting today.